Sorry to interrupt. We're gonna call this meeting to order. Would you please join us in a salute to our nation's flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. For roll call, let the record show Carol, the supervisors, Cassiola, Agizio, Fisher, Barney, and Shafani are in attendance. In addition, Dawn Janusar, our township manager, Jack King, our assistant township manager and director of planning, Sean Bukavinsky, our chief of police, fire chief Ted Wolford, Dan Miller, oh, Dan Miller, the director of Southbridge, Dan Dazroth, our engineer from Gateway, and our township solicitor, Gretchen Moore. And actually, I said Ted. This time, as you're aware, if you have any comments to make on some item you see on the agenda, please feel free to make it at this time. And if it's unrelated to the agenda, we will have a time at the end of the meeting. I do wanna get to this part, though. We have our Parks Board members here that helped put on the last summer festival. And I wanted them to, I was gonna introduce them, but I also wanted them to make a couple of comments about what changed things, how it turned around. A few years ago, it was almost gonna be just canceled because there was just no interest and no attendance, and it just seemed like it was dying. Years and years ago, at one festival, we had air, hot air balloon rides, and we did some interesting things like that and kept it going, but I don't know what you guys did to bring it back the way you did, but it's really, it's probably the most attended ever that we've had. And I know Jack had a lot to do with that, but Wendy, they said you might give us some comments about what you guys saw happening there to bring everybody out to our festival.
A lot of hard work, that's what.
Well, thank you, everybody. First of all, we'd like to thank the board of supervisors for always giving us your support. Cindy, thank you for all the hours you put in that weekend. Bill, I cannot tell you how many comments we get from the families about the pumpkin painting. The kids love it, the families love it. We wanna thank Public Works, the Police Department, the Fire Department, Southbridge, everybody that's always there for us, not just for this, but throughout the year. We wanna thank the previous board members that come back and help us, Bonnie, Glenn, Dan, and Jason, they're always there for us. Jason, I'm sorry, Sean Art, and the people from Senior Center, they've been helping us all year long this year, too. The Scouts are always there for us, the Historical Society, just an amazing township. Everybody comes together and gets this done, and that's what makes the difference, is the support. And I hope I didn't forget anybody, this amazing team right here, everybody works so hard, and our families put up with this for the whole month of September. So, thank you to all of our families. Thank you to Nicole's dad, who is an amazing individual. He worked his butt off like he was a board member. So, if I forgot anybody, please forgive me, we thank you so very much.
Wendy, can you introduce, or can you go down the line and introduce yourselves?
This is Nicole Lewis.
Can you stand up? Get some credit, you guys worked hard.
Barbara Russman. Heather Amanda. Arden Staff. And unfortunately, Lauren and I couldn't be here today. But I also know Bonnie's back there in the back of the room, so Bonnie, thank you too, please be right behind.
Jack, you?
Hold on, Nicole, what's this?
Go ahead.
Yeah, and I just wanna say, and of course, we couldn't do without our leader, Jack King, who really sent it home. And I also just wanna talk about some future opportunities, us as the Parks and Rec Board, we depend on your support, not only from the community and from the board of supervisors. And we have a new, we have an event coming up for Trail of Treats, which is Saturday, October 18th. We have two supervisors signed up, we would love to get any other friends, family, anybody else that would host a booth, we, our goal is to pack the park with, right now, we have like eighteen or nineteen tables, we would love to hit thirty and just make this a really bigger event. Just like Fall Festival, we just wanna keep bringing the momentum we're having to all of our events. So, we'd appreciate any support, or anybody you know to send our way.
Jack?
Not sure what else I can add, but you always find that when you surround yourself by good people, good things happen. And it's probably one of the most dynamic boards I've ever worked with. It's beyond cat herding with them, it's hard to keep up with them, but you can see the results. I think by far, this Fall Festival, this was my sixth, this was probably the biggest and the best that I've ever been a part of. Granted, it takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of effort, and it takes a lot of patience, alright? And if there's one thing I've learned from this board is patience. I go in with little, and I come out with a lot, so. Can't really add any more to, you know, to the thanks, but I do wanna say thank you to Sean Bukavinsky and Detective Agizio. Rich, he, their patience teaches me, because they're so patient with me. And reminders and that type of thing really help us get this accomplished. Also, Serenzia, Joe Serenzia, has given us that lot year after year. It's estimated we put twelve hundred cars in that lot two days in a row this year, so that's huge. Also, I wanted to thank Cecil Intermediate School for allowing us to park up there as well, and we can't ever, ever do a thing in Cecil Township without Carol Farkas. And I also wanna special mention Teresa, who's her shadow during the Fall Festival. I think, I think this year, it was a record as far as donations and, you know, income and everything, so everybody's help, thank you. We can't do it without the community, and we do it for the community, so it's a pleasure serving.
Thank you, Jack.
That's a well-deserved early exit.
Did I have any, did I see anybody ready to come up to, for a comment? Some announcements, our Cecil Township Historic Society will meet on Wednesday, October 15th at 7:00 PM here, and the guest speaker will be Elizabeth Cope, she's the daughter of Myron Cope, and I guess he's, you know, the pretty colorful, she's apparently written a book about him, and she's gonna share stories about her father and his involvement with the community. She's at, they're asking to please wear your black and gold and join them. As Wendy mentioned, that Cecil Township Trail of Treats is on Saturday, October 18th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM. We have it on our sign out, where I know that the Ladies Auxiliary is sponsoring a family bingo at the Cecil Volunteer Fire Station here on Miller's Run on Sunday, October 19th. Doors open at 11:00 and bingo starts at 11:45, and their kitchen will be open, and tickets are available at the door. Our Public Works announces that there will be a fall leaf collection beginning Monday, October 20th, and will end on Friday, November 21st. Leaves will be picked up Monday through Thursday from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM during this period. Due to the high demand of loose leaves, loose leaf pickup, residents are encouraged to use biodegradable bags and place them at the curb. Loose leaves must be raked to the edge of the road, but must not be placed on the road. And any leaf paths containing grass or clippings or branches will not be collected. And there's no, will not be any collections during that time on Fridays for our own road maintenance. Trick or treat in Cecil Township will be, as usual, on Halloween night, Friday, the October 31st, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM. If you are participating, please leave your lights on for the kids. That first ordinance, number 183-2025, to consider the amendment to the MUC ordinance, asking for, making a motion to table, is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For 184-2025, it's to consider application number 2025-0016 for a South Point 2 lot, six to seven subdivision plan, that's on Noble Energy Drive in the SD, South Point District. The Planning Commission has recommended approval, and it's before us. Dan?
Yeah, this is the, this is the simple subdivision, Mark Coons from Horizon Properties here in the audience, if the board has any questions. But basically, this is to subdivide the Doodle Buggs Building, as Mark has described it, the Horizon's gonna maintain ownership of this property, it's just being divided along the lease lines, just because of tax purposes, that the taxes and everything can be incrementally split up, as opposed to as one tax parcel, it's much more complicated. That's really the extent of it. There's some easements that were shown on the plan that have been added to the plan, yeah, the Planning Commission recommended for approval, and it's, that's it.
Do we have a motion for that simple subdivision?
So moved.
It's been moved, seconded and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For number 185-2025, it's to consider a revised application, 2025-0007, for the Iron Ridge Plan Residential Development in Phase 1. It was what we normally were calling the Steel Town PRD Plan 1. The applicant is Keystone 76 Development, and it's, the board did approve it in September, but the revision is just for recording purposes under a new name, so there's nothing changed on it, Dan?
That's correct, yeah, the plan is before you hear tonight, again, it's just the first phase of the development that's being recorded, it's really just for the name change.
Is there a motion to approve that change?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For number 186-2025, consider the request for easements to construct sanitary sewers through the township property, which is on Miller's Run Road, our old Public Works building, for that Iron Ridge Development. Our last manhole, where the manhole they're tapping is in our parking lot, so they need it right away to get to it.
Yeah, so this, this plan here shows you the easement that they need, basically in the dark dashed line. So, this is the township property here, this is where the sanitary sewer manhole, the last manhole ends and the connection up to the township building starts, so they'll be coming up here, and they need an easement approximately 145 plus 88 feet, like 200 and little, between 230 and 240 feet of easement through the property. The sewer will then extend up and under the Montour Trail, and then this is the actual Iron Ridge property right here. So, they're negotiating easements with, with the trail on that, and then once it's passed there, it's on their own property, so. There's, there's an easement description, I think that, the way we, the way the recommendation that I would suggest is, that they've given us the legal descriptions in the plans, that the solicitor for the township put it in the form of easement that she wants for the township, and then they will, they will, well, they won't really give it, we really won't give it to the developer, we're gonna give it to the municipal authority, who's we're gonna give it to. So, according to the developer, he said if it's just easier for the township and the municipal authority to work together to do it that way, developer's responsible for the costs, obviously, related to that.
All right, do we have a motion to approve that right away?
So moved.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For number 187-2025, it's to consider the fifth partial release of the financial security posted for the public and private improvements for Traditions of America, their development from $92,420.54 to $87,421.61, a total reduction of $4,998.93, as recommended by the township engineer.
Yeah, there's been a flurry of activity over there related to getting some things done and cleaned up, so you'll notice, there's a number of these on the agenda tonight. So, as these come in, our office does inspections, and then we make a recommendation to release a certain amount equivalent to the work that they've done there. So, again, on this one here, the first one, it's our recommendation to make the reduction as the chairman has previously described.
Do we have a motion to approve that reduction?
So moved.
It's been moved, seconded and seconded. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For resolution number 188-2025, that's to consider denial of a sixth partial release of that financial security for Traditions of America Phase 4. No, our engineer says no new work was completed, so it's not ready for any release. Is there a motion to approve that denial?
So moved.
It's been moved, seconded. And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For 189-2025, it's considered the fourth partial relief under the same proper development Phase 5, a reduction from $248,248.64 down to $197,148.52, total reduction of $51,100.12. Dan, is that just another cent, you reviewed it, and that's your recommendation?
Yes, I have a letter up here.
Is there a motion to approve that release?
So moved.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For number 190-2025, it's considered the first partial relief of that financial security for TOA on Phase 6, from $505,743.15 to $411,930.43, a total reduction of $93,812.72, as recommended by the township engineer.
That's our recommendation.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved, do I hear a second?
Second.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For 191-2025, it's considered the first partial release of the security for TOA Phase 7, from $585,290.20 to $570,642.87, total reduction of $14,647.33.
That's, again, our recommendation.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For number 192-2025, it's to consider application for payment number one in the final for the emergency storm repairs on our Fellowship Drive to John Koski Contracting in the amount of $19,193.17. This repair, as you recall, was a 48-inch sewer storm sewer pipe that caused a large sinkhole at the edge of our road. Is there a motion to approve the payment?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded.
Second.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For item number 193-2025, consider application for payment number two for the Contract A 2025 pavement maintenance project, part of our liquid fuels amount to Millian, Millian Sons, in the amount of $174,615.20 for work completed to date.
This is the next to last payment, there's still retainage being held at about $34,000 on the project, and would make this current recommendation for payment.
Is that last $34,000 just for punch list items? Or is there work?
Yes.
Oh, Joe, thank, thank you, Joe. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
The payment?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For item number 194-2025, it's to consider application for payment number two in the final for Contract C, 2025 pavement maintenance project, and our, on our light stripe, light instructing to parking lot painting, in the amount of $22,100.4 for work completed to date.
And it's our recommendation to make this payment, we didn't quite spend as much as the contract demanded, there was about $18,000 less than the contract was awarded.
So, okay, that's the final, okay, is there a motion to approve the final payment?
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved?
I'll second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For our item number 195-2025, it's to consider application for payment number three, and also the final for Contract B, 2025 pavement maintenance project to Morgan Escavating, in the amount of $138,003.3.
They would, Jim would make this recommendation for final payment, they provided the bonds and all the other requirements to close out the project.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved?
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For item number 196-2025, consider code enforcement actions regarding the accumulated trash in the village of Muse. I guess, who wants to handle that? Go ahead, Darlene.
I think one of the biggest things is, there is an awful lot of trash in Muse.
Turn that up to your mouth, turn it up.
I think there is an awful lot of trash in Muse that needs to be cleaned up. I was over there talking with a couple residents, and nobody wants to turn anybody in for our code enforcement officer to come over there, because I understand that our code enforcement officer will not go over there and enforce anything unless there's complaints made.
That's not actually exactly true, I think we don't send him out looking for trouble, you know, snooping around.
Right.
But if there's general complaints, he has every right to go over there, and if he sees issues, and it's a area of concern.
If there's general complaints, but is anybody making general complaints?
Yeah, I understand why neighbors don't wanna just complain on their neighbor.
Right.
Well, that's why it's on the agenda, 'cause there's a general complaint about garbage issues in Muse, and the board has to decide whether or not we want to address all garbage issues in Muse, instead of what we currently do, which the board policy is complaint-based, so somebody has to call in and file a complaint in order for code enforcement.
Right, that's what I'm saying, and there's a lot of people that don't wanna make enemies with their neighbors.
Right.
So, they're not going to go ahead and make the complaint.
So, then do we, as a board, want to send code enforcement to the entire village?
Well, the second, or the next resolution is the wildlife.
Well, it's a separate thing, yeah, yeah.
Well, hold on, yeah, go to the garbage first. Do we want, as a board, to send it to everyone?
What's that, Tom?
I said, we need at least consensus from the board that we wanna do that, so I take it, your interest to Darlene and Frank.
My opinion is, we should do it township-wide. Why wait for these things to escalate, happen? It should be done on a daily basis.
I think we have a consensus.
We should have a code enforcement officer that's out there, you know, looking for whatever stuff is falling up.
Looking for something that's really late.
We don't get to the full, we have rodents and everything running around the.
Right. Just like, I'm fine with it, I'm fine with doing that, but just understand that hasn't been the policy of the board before, so there's going to be people that complain. If we're fine with it, then that's fine, but if the policy of the board's shifting, we have, just have to write that out and explain that to Mike.
All right, administratively, we'll let the cleanup begin. All right.
Okay.
For item number 197-2025.
Gretchen, do we have to take a vote on that?
No, it's administrative.
Yeah, I mean, this is really Mike's, you're just giving Mike new direction in terms of how to do his job.
I think, I think so. You're right, Frank.
For 197-2025, the recommendation, consider engaging services of an independent wildlife contractor to address skunk and raccoon issues in the village. Go ahead, Darlene.
Okay, I have the animal control, the fellow that lives over in Muse. He's Big Dan, animal control, that is licensed through the game commission, he's a private contractor. I have copies of his prices here, as to what he charges if somebody calls him and say, just like, say you were the one that was licensed by the commission, the game commission, and I got a problem, I call you up and say, hey, can you come and set a trap? He'd come, set up a trap, he gives you his cost, as far as what it'd be, and if he catches anything, then you pay for him to get rid of it. If you don't catch anything, you don't pay nothing.
Well, hold on, the residents are paying, or the township is paying?
What's that?
The residents are paying, or the township is paying?
Well, it just depends on what we wanna do here.
Well, that's what I'm asking you.
I got the, like I said, I got the list here of what he charges for setting a trap, and it's, if you'd wanna harm.
So, Darlene, what would you suggest?
What do I suggest?
The township could contract with him to help us in the whole village, is that what you're suggesting?
We could contract up to a certain dollar amount.
Yes, I mean, they call the people that are having problems with rodents or whatever, they call him, he charges a flat fee, and what they are, depending on what he's gonna trap, and then he tells where he goes to get rid of them, and if the people want, don't want him to shoot them, he drives them way out in the country to get rid of them.
Darlene, what is the fee?
You know, there's a lot of people that are animal control that don't want their, so, I'm just saying that last year, we hired somebody, what was it, Frankie, $1,900 to put out those few traps?
I wanna say roughly the neighborhood of $3,000, $3,200.
Oh, was it $3,000?
Something I remember.
Let's set a fee base, let's set a fee basis for that, you know, we have X amount of dollars, it says we can go up to, he can catch as many as he can for that amount of money, and remove them from the township.
Yep, and like I said, I have the information here.
Only, only for a certain period of time, too. Let's just run us through, you know, November, December, they tend to hibernate in the winter months, if the board, I mean.
What's an average catch?
Okay, for, the average catch for an exotic animal, $60, a raccoon, 60 bucks, skunk, 60 bucks, opossum, 60 bucks, everything's 60 bucks, except when you get down to a chipmunk, a mole, rat.
Mice, mice.
Yeah, mice.
I don't think we're gonna be able to catch a lot of any combination of.
Coyotes and foxes, it's a little different story, it's a hundred.
So, we're, yeah, we're proving up to 50 animals.
And if you're lucky enough to get a beaver in Muse, you get that much for the pelt.
How about 3,000?
So, that's basically saying, come collect up to 50 animals, you know, is basically where we're at with the $3,000.
Your pass is down to them.
Yeah, let's try that, all right? Offer contract up to $3,000 between now and November 30th, Frank?
Why, why even?
I'd say November and December, just run it to the end of the year, and, you know, we have up to 50 animals that we can.
For that amount, it's not, we don't have to bid it.
Okay, who's gonna be the contact?
We hire somebody local.
Who will be the contact person that's gonna deal with this contractor? For, you know, to confirm this is being done?
All right, Dawn, is there somebody else we can look at first?
What is the advertisement? How long will we have to advertise, I mean, if we?
Don't have to advertise, I got a phone quote.
There's a place right in McDonald's.
It's just that he's in our community, he's right there, you know, it's.
All right, we'll direct Dawn to contact one or two other places, and offer to the lowest bidder of one of those two, and then up to maximum $3,000, how about that? Everybody good with that?
Sounds good.
All right, Dawn, you have your.
How many did the last contract we had, how many did we catch that time? Frank, do you remember? We didn't get very many.
Yeah, but if we don't, if we don't catch them with, you know, this, we don't pay, yeah, exactly, so.
He charges to put the trap, that trap be there until either he catches it, or it's a certain length of time.
He'll know what to do, if he should move it after a while.
Right.
Let's leave it up to them, all right? So, how about if we have a motion to approve what we just talked about, getting some prices, Dawn, get us the good price, and up to $3,000.
Did you give Dawn, did you, did you give John a price?
Yes, I have.
You want, you want a contract here, too, look at the contract?
Is there a motion to approve that?
So moved.
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For our 198-2025, it's the motion to accept the resignation of Michael Stokes, our police officer, one of the police officers, effective September 5th, 2025. Is there a motion to?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For item one ninety-nine dash twenty twenty-five, accept the resignation of Public Works Director Joe Harrison, effective September fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll make that motion.
Move, and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion carries. For the number twenty-two hundred dash twenty twenty-five, consider the destruction of old police records pursuant to the municipal records manual. The list of records will be attached to the October meeting minutes as a matter of record. Is there a motion to approve the destruction?
So moved.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For the two thousand, or two hundred and one dash twenty twenty-five, consider filing a grant application under the multimodal transportation fund for improvements to the Georgetown Road Overpass. The item was discussed, I think Cindy talked about it at the September meeting.
Can I give a quick summary?
And it was, we did approve it by general consensus, so I think she has some further information.
So I did end up applying for that grant, it was two point, two million nine hundred seventy thousand, six hundred sixty-five dollars. It was a, in conjunction with, it's a grant applied for through Cecil Township, I applied for it, and it's to remove or to do significant improvements to the underpass at Georgetown, so that we don't continually have traffic and trucks shearing the top of them off there. We'll find out November eighteenth, whether or not the grant was successful. Very grateful to State Rep. Jason Ortizai, who has fully backed this grant, and is doing everything that he can. The, the improvements will be to the railroad, but we got a letter from the railroad granting us permission to do the work. Still, so, hopefully fingers and toes crossed that we get that grant, it would be huge, almost three million dollars, so it would be huge. It was submitted, the grant was submitted two weeks ago, or week and a half ago.
All right, we may as well just ratify that, the general consent agreement last month, so is there a motion to ratify that consent? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. All right, for our number two, two hundred and two dash twenty twenty-five, approve certification of the twenty twenty-six MMO for the Uniform Pension Plan at eight hundred and thirty-three thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars.
So moved.
It's been moved, and seconded, Dawn, you want to explain that, just so everybody knows what our?
The MMO is, stands for Municipal Minimum Obligation. It's what the township is required to contribute to the pension plans for uniformed and non-uniformed officers. The reason this item appears as approved and not considered is, we are legally, the board, the township is legally required to file their, their minimum obligations by the end of the year, every year.
All right, is there a motion to approve the Uniform Pension Plan contribution?
Which one, the second?
First, with two, two oh two.
We already did that one, yes.
I'm sorry, we're, two oh three is the non-uniformed, not five hundred nineteen thousand, five hundred and thirty?
We didn't vote, there was a motion and a second, you just have to do, call for a vote.
That's what I was asking.
Oh, sorry.
All right, is there a motion, I mean, their vote, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries, you know, I get easily confused. Number two oh three dash twenty twenty-five, it's to approve the certification of the twenty twenty-six MMO for the Non-Uniform Pension Plan, five hundred nineteen thousand and five hundred and thirteen dollars.
So moved.
Moved, seconded, and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Consider motion, item number two oh four dash twenty twenty-five, consider authorizing the execution of the Intergovernmental Cooperation Agreement between Cecil Township, Cecil Township Municipal Authority, North Strabane Township, North Strabane Township Municipal Authority, and the Chartered Township, I guess it's their municipal authority?
Yes.
Okay, regarding the board appointment, and I don't know if anybody wants to talk about that?
It's not their, it's just Chartered Township, it's not their municipal authority, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It's North Strabane Municipal Authority and Cecil Municipal Authority, but Hu- Houston Chartered and Cecil Townships, and North Strabane Townships.
Right, it was five of us.
Yeah.
Five are involved in that.
Right.
It was a settlement in a long-running lawsuit, and they gave the, the, this agreement gives a direction on how our, our new group will get to appoint a non-voting member to that board, basically to the, the description of that. So we have a motion to approve that.
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Now, for Cecil Township, we have to, we have a part in this, since we're one of the five members there, we have to decide how we come up with a voting member, so that my suggestion was that we just authorize the Cecil Township Municipal, our board, the authority to select that non-voting member to that Cannonsburg-Houston Joint Authority. Unless you have any ideas, I take a motion for that.
No, it makes sense, so moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. Also for two hundred, two oh six dash twenty twenty-five, it's to consider advertising for the building of a building inspector for Cecil Township. Is there a motion to approve that?
I'll make that motion.
It's been moved, seconded, and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. For item number two oh seven dash twenty twenty-five, it's to consider the investigator's recommendation for a non-disciplinary status change from paid leave to unpaid leave for officers number one and number two. It's a, it's a personnel matter, so I mean, the board knows who they are, and, you know, the position that we've been in for the last, I think, four months. So is there a motion to approve that recommendation to change the status to non-paid?
So moved.
It's been moved.
Second.
And seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For item number two oh eight dash twenty twenty-five, it's to consider the board of supervisors' minutes from the Tuesday, September second, monthly meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
It's been moved, and I'll second that, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. For two oh nine dash twenty twenty-five, it's to consider the general fund invoices from September first through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-five.
So moved.
Now, your motion?
Second.
And a second, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries. And finally, for item number two ten dash twenty twenty-five, it's to consider registering the Cecil Fire Service for Quick Response Emergency Services, I think Ted could address that for a minute?
Yes, so what this will do is, is we have to be registered to the Department of Health, and have a license, just like Southbridge EMS, to respond to medical emergencies. That'll allow us to have all of the equipment and the capabilities to respond along with them, and provide care should we arrive first, we can initiate patient care to a patient.
That's awesome. So moved.
Excuse me, Ted, didn't we always have that before, or prior years? Because there's been times that the fire department arrived, when it emerged, when I called for an ambulance, fire department was there first, police were there second, and then comes the ambulance. And it was several times, it was Muse's SUV, or the wagon that came, and I was just wondering, is this something now that they're going to have to be more certified, or they have to pass more stringent training for this to take place?
In the past, Muse Fire Department and Cecil Fire Department did have a QRS under their fire department, but since those licensures have expired, or they let them go, and they don't have them anymore, this would give us the licensure township-wide to provide this service. Lawrence Fire Department never had that type of service, and now this would allow them to be capable of providing that service.
Provided they have EMT certification as a minimum.
And yes, they, you have to be emergency medical responder, EMT, advanced EMT, paramedic, to participate in this. So we have those on our fire trucks, and we will be able to provide that patient care with those people.
Teddy, I think when, in Muse in particular, when Scott Sedore was the chief, they had some volunteers that happened to be certified EMTs, so they established their own quick service on their, on their service truck.
Yes, in the past, they have, and we've had an EMS committee that's worked for the last year to build up our equipment, and also met with Southbridge many a times, and Southbridge has helped us obtain a lot of the supplies and equipment that we need to make this happen. This is one of the steps for us to get to this goal, is to process the paperwork now with the Department of Health and EMS West, who controls the licensure and certifies us, and we'll also have to talk to a doctor at the hospital, probably Cannonsburg or something like that, that would be our medical command physician, who will oversee our medical license.
Ted, do you have a, a group of people that have already passed the EMT certifications and are ready to go on this?
All of our paid staff are required to be EMTs minimum, but we do have, we actually have physicians, we have registered nurses, pre-hospital nurses, paramedics, EMTs, throughout the three stations.
Okay, that's great to hear. Is there a motion to approve that reg- registration?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved.
I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion carries, thanks Ted. This time we do open the microphone to any general comments. Please feel free to come up to the microphone, but please give us your name and address for the record.
J. Barbarosa, nine sixty Baker Road. This morning at eight twenty, one of the police officers showed up at our door, saw there was a dead body in our yard. It was a very horrific, terrible event, some young man lost his life. Unbeknownst to us, our neighbors, Dale and Debbie, never bailed on the up front of Baker Road. I can only surmise, he was driving on our road, coming from like Georgetown, going to like where the roundabout was, and he left the, the road, I, I can't speculate what caused it, whether it was deer, speeding, or whatever, I'm just telling you, the worst thing could ever happen to you, and I've been here multiple times. Last year, I was here with a petition, asking you to do something about the speeding on our road. Painted lines this year, it's not enough, okay? Two decades ago, a person got killed at the old Baker and intersection that now, now realigned, obviously you know, and the state came in and put stop signs in, okay? We had two stop signs on Baker and Morgan, but people ran it all the time, it was a bad scenario than anybody that's lived here. For long periods of time, you might recall that, a young person lost their life, again, speeding was involved in it, state came in and did something. I remember coming here, listening to people complain about, you know, why you put stop signs up? That was the only thing you could do to get people to slow down, and I like to say, because of that, nobody else has died. I've complained to you about mailboxes getting hit, the police has arrested drunk drivers who come into my yard with their vehicle, trying to get out. I've never had, excuse me, a dead person in my, my yard. It's not something you should ever have to go through. I've been trying to be very positive and polite with you, and I know your hands are limited, your resources are limited, you don't have enough police officers, I get all that, this can't happen, you know? The school buses that come up our road have to come and block both lanes, and I, I know you guys don't like hearing that, but people's speed, I've talked to Amazon drivers, FedEx, UPS, the mailman, anybody that comes up our road. Even today, you closed the road off for about three or four hours, as soon as the police left, and there were multiple people there, here comes the eighteen-wheelers up, they're not afraid, they don't follow the, the posted signs you guys put up. Everything you've tried to do is a Band-Aid, I'm sorry to say that. I, I've asked you before about speed bumps, I know Peters has them, I know Bethel has them, and the comments I've been hearing, it's hard to plow, you worry about motorcycles, it doesn't have to be a six-inch curb, it could be a ramp. I'm sorry, but you gotta do something, you know, what's it gonna take? Again, someone lost their life between nine o'clock, nine-thirty last night, he laid there all night, you know? People drive by there, I know it's not well-lit, I have lights at the end of my driveway, instead of Dale and Debbie, but nobody saw, even daylight this morning, it was a police officer, apparently this family was looking for him, a police officer found his body, I didn't even know it, it, it's just a terrible sight. So, I don't know what you guys can do, I'm asking you to do something, and I don't want to go above your head and get, you know, it'd get ugly and go to the state. I know it's a township road, that road is never, ever built, designed to ta- to handle the amount of traffic and the trucks. I mean, I, my wife and I were sitting there watching the football game last night, we're used to hearing bang, bang, bang. Then I feel bad, because maybe me and my wife, or Dale or Debbie could have gone out and maybe saved this guy's life, instead he laid there all night, dead. It is a terrible thing that we have in our minds, all of us who live on Baker Road saw that this morning. I, I don't blame you, but you gotta do something, you know, and I, I realize they're speeding everywhere in, on the interstate, Cecil Township, there's, you know, you've got other issues, not just Baker Road, but we've been complaining to you, hoping this would never happen, and here we are, it did. And I'm telling all of you, and anybody that's out there, you don't want to hear trucks going down your road at two o'clock in the morning, you don't want to hear a guy on a motorcycle who does wheelies almost daily on our road. And I can't blame Sean and his officers, because they're, every time they come, they do a good job, as soon as they leave, it's like people know that. You know, so I, I'm asking, please do something. And the last thing I got to say, excuse me, I have to commend Sean and one of his offers, Justin, because Justin saved my life this past summer with a medical emergency. I just got to say, you got to teach you guys how to use the EpiPen, because they didn't know how to use it, but thank you for that. But aside from that, I, I told you, I will feed you guys donuts, I, I invited the whole board to my house for breakfast, I don't know what else I can do, I've asked you, put the police car in my driveway, we gotta do something, okay? And this isn't just probably Baker Road, there's, I've heard other people complaining about other things over the last several months, over the last year and two. So, please, that's all I can ask you, you have to do something, we just can't turn our heads again, all right? It might be my kids, or it might be me, we can't get out of our driveway. I, I'm telling you, anybody that's been out there, I know Dawn, you've been in our house, Tom, you've been there, you know where I live, you know the issues. It's just unfortunate it had to come to this, where somebody lost their life on that road. Thank you.
Candy Walthier, Elm Drive, to follow up on what he said, I know several states don't use speed hump, the speed bumps because of the plowing, but they do use speed dips, which is just as effective, and then the, the people were able to plow the roads.
Never heard of it, is it like a reverse?
Yeah, so you'd be coming down, and there's just like a little V cut in the road, and they usually run them over, and then there's usually, like the, the storm drains on each side, you know, so that the water can run into the storm drains, but they actually work really well, and they can still plow the roads.
I never heard of them.
Dan?
I'm not, I'm not, I'll look into it.
A lot of where that they're approved by PNDOT, whatever we have to do, it has to be something that's approved by the state. I know speed tables are approved by PNDOT.
Did you look at the rule first?
What's that?
Did you look at it first?
Sure.
Okay, um, first of all, off, I would, um.
Second of all.
Second, sorry, sorry, Tom, just a second, Cindy, do you know anything about the trees at the Public Works?
So, we continue to work with the residents over there, they've been very happy with the lighting, the changes in the lighting, and so we're just working with them to rearrange stuff, and Jeff works with Tom on an as-needed basis.
The other question I had was, do we have, this is probably for Gretchen, do we have an update about that sale of twenty-two Maweni property that you were going for private or judicial sale?
We got it.
We got it already.
Did we buy it, or we sold it?
Purchased it private before bidding, under what the board authorized, and it's been transferred and complete.
Okay, thank you.
Was it twenty-five hundred?
The two thousand range.
At the, two thousand some dollars, I can't remember exactly what we got it for.
Okay, and the other question I had is probably from Chief Wolford, did we get that grant from June that you guys were talking about that would help pay towards the firefighter salaries?
No, we did not.
Okay, thank you, and I would like to ask, I was one of only three residents that attended the breakfast with the fire chief and the police chief. I would respectfully ask this board to schedule a meeting with them again, at night, in this meeting room, so that the general public is able to attend when they're not working, and listen to what they have to say, so that everybody is on the same page, and everybody understands what's going on, because it was informative, and you did learn a lot, because there have been times that I have asked questions at this podium, and board members have answered my questions that are completely inaccurate, from the actual information that came out at that meeting. And that, to me, is a concern. And that to me is a concern. My other question is, is I would, I wholeheartedly support the fire tax as a separate line item. I want our firefighters to get the money that they deserve. I don't want anybody else's fingers in it. I want them. I want every one of these guys to get what, and, and women, to get what they deserve. And I want it in a fire tax like it used to be, when there wasn't any of this double dipping. We cannot sustain this in this township. We're robbing Peter in this township to pay Paul. And we can't do it anymore. I want them to get their money for everything that they need to get it for. And I want it in a fire tax like we used to have.
Can I, can I ask a question? Not to be argumentative, just curious. Like, what do you mean by double dipping?
I didn't say double dipping. We have to, there's no way that you cannot keep.
You did say.
You did say that.
Did I say that? Sorry. I meant, well, okay, what, I'm not, don't mean double dipping. I might've used the wrong word. My, my point is this. We went from, I mean, these guys used to get a hundred and sixty, a hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year. We went to one point three. I'm not arguing with that. I just don't understand where the extra money came from and what programs we left out to be able to give them that money, because it wasn't there prior. We should've been giving it to them. These guys do not have what they need, because you were only giving them a hundred and eighty thousand dollars for how many years? Their equipment goes up, their truck braces go up, everything that they have, that they need to come into your house to save your life in a burning building is going up. But you guys weren't raising their salary. Or their, their donate, their money that they were getting. And now you're getting it, so they need more money. That's it. I'm fine with that.
Wait, can I just say something? And it's gonna be controversial, so.
Already controversial.
But I just, I feel the need to say this. So first of all, we are growing township. So, every year our budget goes up. So, we allocate money to things that are important to the residents, and it's our responsibility to protect. So if you notice, the police budget goes up every year. The Public Works budget goes up every year. The fire budget goes up every year. We can do that, because there's additional residents, additional revenues, things like that. So we're not taking money from anybody to give it to somebody else. We're just able to do that because of increased revenue, first of all.
We could just put it on the fire tax, and we'll know where it goes.
Well, well, hold on. So, first of all, second of all, there's a budget. So you can look and see, a budget, a fire budget that is managed by our fire chief. Um, and I'm, I'm gonna apologize, I'm not trying to start a war here, but there's monies that the fire, the volunteer fire companies have. We are by no means shorting them money. So I take exception to that somehow we're holding money, or we're giving money to another department in order to, um, like somehow cheat them. They all, every single company, some more than others, have money in savings accounts that they're holding on to.
Do you know if that money that they have in savings accounts is donations or township taxpayer money?
Why does it matter? It all goes to the fire service.
Because my concern, and I expressed this to him, my concern was. I'll be quite honest, I want the fire department to get the money. I don't want you guys putting it in the general fund and, and giving them, say, the one point two or, or a million, or whatever you give them now, you know, and say, hey, we're gonna give them this money, and then, then something else comes up, and it's because it's in the general fund. It can be used for anything else. It says that in the law. It says if you put it in the general fund, it can be used for whatever you choose, regardless of whether you designate it for the fire department or not. What I'm asking is.
Well, I would agree with that, but I want to hear, like, can I, let's just, I hate to put you on the spot on this one, but I'm gonna throw you, I'm gonna throw you out for the wolves on this one. Like, we have a fire chief. We don't reach into his budget and tell him where to spend his money. He works with the volunteer fire companies, the chiefs in those companies. He allocates things for things that they need. So we're by no means, as any board member, sitting here saying, Ted, you need to spend it on this. Or, or fire companies, you need to buy this.
I understand that, and that was very clear from those meetings. I, I learned a lot from him. I just also feel that everybody in the township would benefit from hearing what he has to say.
I wholeheartedly.
At an evening meeting.
I wholeheartedly agree.
And I would, I would just ask that he have the opportunity to speak to the public, so that everybody understands. He was very informative.
I wholeheartedly agree, but you stood at, you're standing at the podium right now accusing us of mismanaging money, and it's not happening.
Kara Shorten, fifty-eight North DePolly, I have one topic. Uh, but first I do want to address the fact that if we are gonna hold people to a three-minute timer, we need to hold every single person that stands up here to a three-minute timer. She was up here for eight minutes, and your timer did not go off.
While the other people were talking also. They were taking her time.
She took more than three minutes.
Alright, let's go.
So let's be fair. Let's be fair across the board. Next topic. I would like to bring up, uh, ahead of the discussion on our new business for the solar ordinance. I would also like to reinforce that we definitely need a solar ordinance. We saw this at the zoning board. Um, it put us in a pretty difficult situation to rule one way or another, what to do. We don't have the support in the ordinance to be able to make, uh, what I would consider to be a fair decision about what's going on with respect to solar. We have to consider it as an accessory use at this time. And that really kind of limits our ability to take into consideration people who might want to do things like this. I think when you look at the solar ordinance, you need to look both at, uh, roof-mounted solar, as well as ground-mounted solar. And, um, one recommendation that I have is one that was brought to the zoning board. Um, there was a co- a gentleman from a solar company. I'd like to see, uh, us look at what they're saying they're seeing as they travel to other townships, as well as what some of these other townships that are not in favor of the solar for different reasons, what they're seeing. I think we need to look at it from both angles and make an informed decision about what's right for this township. Because, you know, there's a lot of discussion around here regarding whether or not we should, who should be allowed to do what with their property. No one's trying to tie anyone's hands, but we don't have the right support in the ordinance to rule on that one way or another, to, uh, to recommend a decision one way or another. And I think it puts us in a bit of a sticky situation. So, I would ask that, that we consider that. I'd be happy to assist in, in any way with any, uh, help that you might need with respect to gathering information and working on the solar ordinance. Thank you.
The board members, Kara is absolutely right on that, that we do have to address it. Because if, if we don't, and people come along to make application, I mean, not only does it put them in a position, but.
I brought that up back last October.
Okay.
To bring this, get moving on it before we get caught.
Alright, okay, what I was gonna tell you though, that, that if we're gonna work on an ordinance, I mean, uh, we can look at model ordinances, which Dan and I have been doing, and, uh, we, it, we've got to decide, like what kind of zone do we want it in? Most places want to put them on farms if there's gonna be a, a field array. And we have no agricultural zone.
Tom, I've already gotten three different proposals to put a solar farm right next to Crown Castle, on the sixty-five acres that I have there.
Okay, well, I'm just saying that we got, we gotta decide where it's, where it could go.
And I've just been avoiding it, because I don't want them there. I don't want no solar farms here in Cecil Township, to be honest with you.
But it's, we have to provide for different kind of legitimate businesses. And if we don't, and they apply, we're behind the eight ball on that, because, uh, they can set their own standards, and it's a fight for us.
That's why we gotta get an ordinance.
Wait, it's a, that's what I'm saying. We've got, gotta get an ordinance. You're just saying you don't want to see them, but we have, still have to have an ordinance, whether you vote for them in those particular places or not.
Well, we, we brought this up last, last, it was a year ago.
Alright, think about it though. We gotta decide what kind of zone we want, want to see them in. What, what should be their, should be their minimal size parcels? Um, should it be conditional use for all of them? Um, what kind of buffer should we consider? Um, fencing, or should we require that? I've written down here, um, what kind of ground cover would they have to put and, and maintain it?
Can you send that to us instead of reading it?
Yes, I'm ready for the residents too.
I know Gretchen had circulated several samples that she had from her office to the board members. I can send that out.
I thought Jack King worked on that a long time ago. Way back whenever we mentioned it. Did he give you a list? Because at that point in time, there was a lot of chitter chatter about all these other communities didn't want it. And there's a big one out going to Cherry Valley.
Alright, doesn't matter whether they want it. We, we should have an ordinance for it, and I'm just telling you, that's the thing you have to think about. If you want to do it on your own, look at, uh, some model ordinances. You can get them from our state association. They're called model ordinances on solar, um, installations.
Okay. I'll send that back out to the board members, Starling, what I received from Gretchen.
Alright, okay, I addressed that already. It was one of those issues. But we're still, public speaks, so go ahead.
AC Roland, fifty-two Sycamore Street. First off, we need to get our new man Jeff a name tag. Thank you, sir, for coming. Thank you for all you do. Catch you after the meeting. Got a question?
Can we introduce him? This is Jeff Huesman.
Stop my time though, Darlene.
He is our deputy director of Public Works.
Go ahead.
Ready, Darlene? Hit the button. Alright, so the next thing is for our police, our fire chief Ted. Ted, thank you for all you do. Uh, I don't think you get enough recognition. Um, I will say, there's been a lot of chatter online. I, maybe you can address it, saying that I've heard that every fireman is also a fire inspector. There's been talk about that we outsource our fire inspections. Can you clear that up? And before you answer. And then, the other question is for Tom. On the animal vector control, however you want to look at that, getting the other bids, thank you. Um, also, will there be an laser, uh, a twenty-four hour ma- maintained number that any residents of Muse can get to if they have an issue? Whether or not there's a trap there or not, whoever we get, but there needs to be, because they hit in between two thirty and about four fifteen for the skunks. Groundhogs come out early evening to eat all of our gardens. And the raccoons hit the garbage on Mondays. And, uh, they also hit all the stuff going into the crick. And so, part of this maintenance and cleanup that you're talking about doing for the code, I think that our crick needs to be included in that cleanup. I've personally gone and cleaned it up. I didn't get a chance this year. I may still go back out. But with the new culvert at Walnut, let's maintain this stuff. We're putting the money into it. Let's make our community beautiful. And lastly, every one of the landlords in Muse and in all of our surrounding townships, when they rent to these renters that have animals, they better make sure that that renter, when they leave, take their animals with them. Because they get these renters, they come in for one or two months, they have cats, whatever, they're not fixed, and then it's our problems. From, you know, urinating and spraying on our porches and car tires and vehicles, to getting in fights with our animals who are vaccinated, who, and then that's a bill for us. So, something needs to be done ordinance-wise, because the people that live in Muse, it's not our animals that are, are being unkept and all that. It's these renters that come in, and then they go out. And the landlords, uh, there needs to be some kind of home inspections, that there are blight buildings, that I hope that the code enforcement, who I've heard sick, I don't know if that's true, God pray for him if he is. But if he can't do the job, we need to get somebody in there that can.
Alright, I see, I mean.
Let Ted answer his first, because I have.
No, you're not. Direct the questions to the board, please.
Okay, well.
No, he can, Ted can answer.
No, direct it to the board, please.
I mean, that's a question that only he could answer about their fire inspection.
We'll get the answer for you.
Don't be, I'm not being mean or rude, Ted.
Alright, so direct the questions to the board. That's what we, it's our meeting. Alright, what is it? What's your question?
Were you not just listening for the whole three minutes?
It was hard, go ahead.
She wanted to know about fire inspection, and why can't Ted answer that?
Wait.
There is, there, there is talk being pushed around that we do not have fire inspectors. It has to be outsourced. My understanding that the, the firemen that we have are licensed certified fire inspectors. I would like that clarity.
I know, we do have the requirement, uh, as we hire full-time firefighters, they are certified. And right now, the, the plan is that we, we have an outside inspector, but we also have our guys working together. Our goal is to finally take it all in-house. But I mean, it's a gradual process.
But I just feel like that the firemen are kind of getting dumped on, online, and it's un, it's un.
Who's dumping?
Our firemen do amazing jobs.
Who's dumping on them? Hold on, let's let Ted answer this.
Thank you.
Our firefighters that work for the township, who are paid by the township, are fire inspectors, and they have been out doing fire inspections.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
But our, our guys are working hard, and they cover a lot of territory. And for people to be upset that Muse has a bunkhouse where we can have twenty-four hour service in our township to be a bad thing, or if another township helps us out, like when Patrick's house called on fire, multiple firehouses came. That's not a bad thing. That's good. That's cooperation, and that's working together. And I'm tired of our firemen getting dumped on. Our firemen are amazing.
AC, who's saying that's a bad thing?
Oh, do you really want me to give names? I like anonymity. Okay.
Alright, AC, thank you.
Alright, well, what about the other question for you? The one I directed to you?
And what was that again?
See, that's the problem. So, I'm asking, is there going to be a twenty-four hour number?
No.
For us, okay.
Let, let me answer, because, yeah, there's, there's no one.
And there's skunks out.
There's no one that we're gonna have on call twenty-four hours, AC, that's gonna say, I'll be right out to get those. They'll plan in advance. But there's no contractor that we can contract with that will have a twenty-four hour service to perform a pickup of, of, you know, nuisance wildlife. It's just not gonna happen.
How does that work, Dawn? How, alright, say.
If you're having problems at your home, you'll call Teresa.
If we have a problem, who do we call?
If you're having problems, you'll call the township offices. Teresa will get it to me. I'll coordinate with the contractor.
Okay, and so that.
Yeah, there's, there's just no way a twenty-four hour, it, it just won't work that way.
Okay, and as far as our, or you want to pass beautification of Muse, which we're all for, what happens if we don't, we, I can name off eight people right now this month that has called the code guy and got zero response. It is my understanding he may be ill.
Stop, stop. AC, stop.
Yeah, that's, yeah, that's not.
That's not true.
We answer every call.
Yeah.
It's not true what you're saying. Every call's answered. Alright, we, alright. Anybody else have any general comments? Any board members have any? Oh, wait, we have to talk about a couple of things that I put on the agenda.
Yeah, we still have, got some things.
Okay, um. The, the state does allow the township to offer some benefits to our volunteer firefighters. Uh, it says there are two types of tax credits available to volunteer firefighters, and even nonprofit emergency medical service volunteers. And, uh, those are an earned income tax credit and a real estate tax credit. The credits can be provided by an ordinance or resolution of the township. But for an income tax credit, a municipality that levels an in, in earned income tax may establish a tax credit against an individual's liability imposed under chapter three of the local tax enabling for active service i- i- as a volunteer. That's one option we have, that we can offer a benefit to our firemen. The other one is a real estate tax credit, and it says the governing body of a municipality may provide for a tax credit against real estate property tax to be granted to an active volunteer. The tax credit will apply to taxes levied on, on their residential real estate property under an owner occupied in, um, um, piece of property. Those are the two types of options that we can, or, they're not even necessarily options, there's two offers we can make our firemen. It says the, under eligibility, in, in our ordinance, uh, resolution, the governing body should establish a volunteer service credit program that creates the annual requirements for that certification. The volunteer service credit program must consider these following activities in determining, uh, credits towards certification of that active service. And there's four, I'm gonna read them to you. One, it should be based on the number of emergency calls to which a volunteer responds. Uh, two, the level of training and participation, informal training and drills that they participate in. Number three, the total amount of time extended by a volunteer on administrative and/or even other support services, including fundraising and facility or equipment maintenance. And finally, the fourth one, the involvement in other events or projects that aid the financial viability, emergency response, or operational readiness of a fire department or a nonprofit, profit emergency medical service. I think that's something that, uh, considering the, the, the impact it would have on our budget would be negligible. I think we have to consider that, because we've always talked about, even if we have paid firemen, we need volunteers to support them.
Yes.
And, um, um, you know, work alongside of them. And, and we, we have that one volunteer retention program. It is kind of a, somewhat of a minor program, but they, this is significant. It's specifically for them, for their real estate tax and/or their wage tax.
I'll agree with you.
So I think we have to, um, at least investigate that, about having a resolution or an ordinance saying such.
I agree with you a hundred percent, Tom.
Anybody else have any comments on it?
Send us what you just read from?
Yes, yes. That was just a synopsis from the state.
Just send it to us, so we can review it.
Alright, the next thing, um, talking about the, the shifting of the fire service budget. Right, right, right now, we don't have a fire, a dedicated fire service account. We put, um, one, last year we put one million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars into a. one, last year we put one million, three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars into a line item for, in our general fund to pay out, uh, fire service expenses. Um, now that we're getting paid firemen and, um, duty shift, which has only started to happen in the last few years, um, uh, I, I think it would behoove us to reinstate that fire tax and put the, the money dedicated for this fireman that we're going to be paying. Now, I'm not advocating putting all of the, the fire service money, the whole one point three million in it, or even our next budget, we're, we're working on the budget now, and I think we could be up to two million dollars for the new budget, but, um, uh, I'm not advocating putting it all in there. I'm advocating putting just the payroll part for our, our paid guys, whether it's the retention money, whether it's the, um, uh, uh, duty shift money or the paid guys, along with the insurances and the, uh, company and cost to that. And I, and I, I think that has to be dedicated because if you hire somebody, you have to pay them. You can't adjust and pull that money out for something else. So that, that's the part I think should be dedicated, and I think, uh, that would, uh, go a long way in having the fireman understand that, you know, when we commit to paying people, we're gonna pay them. Someone know if there's any comments on that?
I agree.
All right, well, let, let us at least look into it.
Yeah, let's look into it.
Well, I mean, we gotta pay our bills. You're saying you're not gonna pay your bills? I mean, they're firemen, they, they're entitled to get paid. We pay them.
We don't need a fire-
That's why we wanna show a line item on our real estate taxes.
You pay all your bills in a township. We're running a business here. You have bills come in, money come in, you pay it out, you pay your bills.
Right, right. But it's always nice to show that you got a tax, a fire tax like we used to have back in two thousand eighteen, prior to that time, once-
It's in an account, you write a check, and you pay them.
I think Darlene's, well, I think Darlene's point though is that, uh, if, if it's a dedicated fire tax, not only will the residents see it, but they'll see that amount out of their, if they're given the township six hundred bucks, they might be given the township for our general fund four hundred, and two hundred of their, uh, tax bill goes to the fire departments. I think they would like to know that.
Wait, hold on. So time out. We don't have a police tax, we pay our police officers. We don't have a public works tax, we pay our public works employees.
That's, that's, apples and oranges, Cindy. We have a police department. That's part of our department. The fire service, the volunteers aren't. They're, they're independent. It's three separate-
But you said this wasn't for volunteers. You said this was to pay our guys.
And, and any of the volunteers that, uh, participate in duty shift or the, uh, uh, retention money that we give at the end of the year. It's for any firemen, they, they're gonna get paid something.
But how, like, how did we come up with the dollar amount?
Ted gave it to me.
That's, that's what Teddy's, that's what Teddy's for. He'll keep track of everything.
For, for new-
Right, Ted?
What numbers did I-
Uh, for four, four new firemen on this budget, to have eight in our township, you said it would take one point three million for having eight paid guys, our retention money, medical insurance, and the duty shift that you'll still have to fill. That's where that came from.
Correct, under a two million dollar budget.
Right. So I'm just saying that, that assuming that we can, I think we can work a two million dollar budget, one point three million is for the paid guys. Like I said, whether they're volunteers that are doing duty shifts or, uh, the retention money or, uh, insurance for them, workers comp, all the costs related to payroll. I don't care who gets a check. It would come out of that account.
Mr. Chairman, there are some caps in the fire tax on what you can use-
The millage, yes.
There are some, well, there's caps on the millage, but there's also caps on what can be dedicated to compensation for personnel. So I'd have to look into that. You can't just, you know, take your max of three mills and dedicate it all towards comp. So there are so-
It's one mill is the cap.
Towards comp?
Towards payroll.
Right, yeah, yeah, okay, there, right, so there are-
But the millage amounts changed. It's not like, like in the past, it was, okay, we did one mill per department, and that was like a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars, but it's not one straight mill anymore, so.
Right, it wouldn't be more than a mill anyway, on the budget that I saw.
A mill is like three, is like-
Not, not the percentage they're taking. One point three million wouldn't be, um,
A mill?
Barely, barely half a mill. Maybe point six tenths of a mill for the fire service, so it's, it's under the one mill.
It's not making sense to me either. So let's do, so let's do this. So Gretchen, will you look into the rules? Ted, since you are the fire chief and this is your department, will you give us some recommendations on what you think? And then we can come back and have a public meeting with the firemen to actually have a public discussion about-
Can we have a date for a public meeting with the firemen?
I don't care. Let's give Ted a second to take a breath and figure this out.
Sorry, it's been a long day.
Yeah.
Yes, we could plan a day and get that out to the public and definitely have a presentation and explain a lot of things that have been going on with the party.
Maybe we can do something in November or December.
But to be clear, to be clear, we do not need to raise taxes in two thousand twenty-six.
I'm not raising taxes. All I'm saying is I'd like to show the transparency on our real estate taxes like we used to do and show that that was, so, there was the general, and then it broke down. So much was in the general, so much was in for the fire tax, so much was in for the machinery tax. Back in two thousand eighteen, prior to that time, it showed right on your real estate tax. Once that went away, when Jordan took over. So people, the residents knew. Yes, don't shake your head, no. It was whenever Janet D. Felice was here. I, I should've brought my papers with me.
It's not why, you're confusing issues. We, we rolled that into our general fund by choice of the board. It had nothing to do with Jordan Tax Service taking over.
I'm just saying that it was transparency. That's what I'm wanting for the residents of the township. Transparency. We gotta take care of our firemen, period. Whether they're paid or whether they're volunteer.
Stop. Nobody's saying we're not taking care of our firemen, and our budget and everything is on the website. It, Jack does a phenomenal job of placing our budget out there and everybody to see. Just, I mean, I don't know about you, but I don't often pull my tax bill out to see how much we're getting in fire service. I'm more likely to go to the township website and look at the township budget.
Not me, I keep my taxes right there. I got them for the last forty years.
I'm willing, I'm willing to bet you a-
Thank you very much. And thank you, volunteer firemen, because I used you too many times.
All right. So we'll keep working on it.
Good point.
Good.
Wait, I do have something. Hold on.
One more thing that we, on that subject, we, we will resolve this because our, obviously our budget, uh, we started budget talks now through October, November. We have to adopt a preliminary budget by November thirtieth. So we have to have this pinned down, and we will.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, Dan, you wanna announce the date, or are we not ready? Go ahead. Wait, go ahead.
We finally, uh, set up a date for the CPR class for the community. It'll be December fourteenth, Sunday.
Yep.
Um, typically, it's one o'clock, so we'll start then.
Yeah, so are we doing hands only and then heart save, or just hands only? Okay. So in the past, we've done, the past time it worked really well, we did the hands only first for what it was an hour, and then, um, the full certified CPR class. It's totally free. Um, and you get to hang out with the two of us and Dan's daughter for a couple hours. It's a whole bunch of fun. So come learn CPR, cuz it could literally save a life, on December fourteenth. Jack, will you put that on the website? Thank you.
Do we have a, like, next step for the solar, and did we skip the fire truck then, or what do we want?
Um, I think the next step is we're gonna circulate solar ordinances um, to come up with a consensus solar ordinance and then hold an ordinance hearing. I don't know about the other one.
Just get them the fire truck then?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chief. That, that subject came up too. I got, uh-
We need your mic, Tom.
On October second, I think I got an email talking about, uh, the specs on a fire truck and the costs, and I'm not sure exactly. It looked like it was, uh, Cecil number three was looking at a truck. Uh, I read the specs, we got, I read the salesman's presentation to the, uh, fire department, and I don't know where we are with that. I just said, I, I know our board has to be involved, but again, it's a way, Ted.
When you requested it, I, uh, I provided you that information, and you said it was gonna be up for discussion with the board. Uh, we were looking at over a million dollars for our next purchase fire truck. Um, just to give a little background, fire apparatus is about four years out to order them new. Uh, there is a demo fire truck that's out there right now, would be available in April. If it's something that the board would wanna pursue. Uh, payments, if we would put down around five hundred thousand dollars, would be seventy thousand dollars a year for ten years. If we did not put a down payment of half a million out, it would be ninety-nine thousand dollars a year for fifteen years.
When, when do we do delivery of the truck we already bought?
It should be anytime between the end of this month and beginning of November. It's almost complete.
Okay, so, thank you for those numbers. Gives us something to work at at a budget time.
Okay.
All right, anything else on new business?
I have something before we adjourn.
Go ahead.
Supervisor Gisio brought up a good point, that we as a board should be good stewards of our taxpayers' money. Right, Frank? We should all be on board to do a forensic audit for the past five to eight years so we can provide accountability, transparency to the taxpayers. I request that we proceed with this.
I didn't say about a forensic audit.
I know you didn't, but you said, how else are you gonna be a good steward of our taxpayers' money unless you do a forensic-
You do it on a daily basis.
Okay, well, I feel that we need to do a forensic audit and have the accountability and transparency to the taxpayers.
What are you looking for, Darlene?
What, I, I don't know. That's why we would have a forensic audit. They'll find it, not me.
Do you know how a forensic audit works?
What's that?
Do you know how a forensic audit works?
Yes.
How?
They check, they go back and they check to see where the money has gone.
No. So that's a general, a general audit checks through all your accounts, which we have done every year. You have access to it, the public acts-
I have access to it, but-
Act to it. That checks the overall health and financial condition of the township. A forensic audit is looking for specific fraud, so you would have to have an actual concern, a specific area, something where you think money is missing, and they would dive deep into that specific area. You can't do a forensic audit of an entire township. So if you have some sort of fraud that you think that, that is being perpetrated by someone within the township, please by all means speak up. But otherwise, I'm guessing this is more of a ploy on your part.
All right, that's enough of that. Um, Darlene, did that answer?
Well, what's the purpose? Like, what's the fraud? What are we looking for?
Just things in general.
All right, yeah.
That's not the purpose of a, an audit, a forensic audit.
All right, there being no further business, this meeting is declared adjourned.